Maintain that building as it should be maintained, as well as making sure that one hundred dollars doesn't really cover hardly anything. You know, so three hundred was was on there. We did add also that not for profit pricing of fifty dollars for not for profits that have small meetings. But that that needs board approval. The Geiger conference room is for meetings only. There are no be no parties or anything like that in there. No. So that's 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 another small change that was there. If you want to do them park, got the patio. That's a seven hundred and fifty dollar refundable damage deposit. Those are the biggest changes right now.
Uh, the softball and baseball fields, is that new for per team fee? Or is that they used to have a blanket of one fee?
Yeah, it is a per team fee because sometimes they. Um, play a little longer and plus that gives us an opportunity to rent it out more than once. Uh, if they had multiple games and multiple teams. Because originally, if somebody came in there and played one game, they rented it for the whole day. They had more multiple teams, uh, they might. So it's a little bit of a break for those people that just want to play the one game versus multiple games throughout the day. Uh, but if you look at league stadium, that's that's been four hundred for quite a while.
This would be ordinance two thousand twenty-five, twenty-nine.
Question on the softball fields, does that include our rec teams too that they have to pay?
No. No, these would be people that are non-league. Uh, times, so.
That's what I thought, thank you.
They they there is a contract that they pay and and the girl softball always has paid this to us for dirt and. Things that we need to do, so they voluntarily give us that amount of money every year. And it comes, they actually, I think last year. Uh, the girl softball, I believe, is about ten thousand dollars. It's quite a bit.
Yeah, they give a lot.
That that they give towards the field, so. They've been very generous.
What ordinance?
Two thousand twenty-five, twenty-nine.
So we need a uh, motion to consider the ordinance?
Uh, introduce.
Excuse me.
I'm making a motion, introduce.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so.
We move to suspend the rules and adopt tonight.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll second that.
You got a first, second, suspend the rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Adopt.
Now, you can make a motion to adopt if you like.
Motion to adopt.
I second.
Yeah, first, I think we had two seconds, Mr. Bounce, okay. Uh, all those in favor of adopting two twenty-two-five, two-nine?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yes.
Aye.
Wow.
Aye.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Five ayes, no names.
Okay, we have a consideration to approve the the city calendar and the holiday schedule for next year. Not really any changes, you know, obviously, there's. Uh, we've had it taken consideration at the rate, any meeting scheduled during a holiday, that those were changed. I think there was just one of those. Uh, was it a Board of Public Works? Do you remember, Tom?
Yeah, I think it was.
One of the Board of Public Works meeting, we had a change. Because of uh, if there was a holiday on that Thursday. Another that, I think, were everything else pretty much is the same, same number of holidays, same holidays that are offered. Don't know of anything else that really changed.
That's right.
Uh, we will be doing on the fr- uh, that Friday after New Year's will be the tree pickup time. That's a little. A little earlier than normal, but as early as we can get, as it can possibly be, actually. We have that and then down below on your second page, you have the holiday schedule that's listed there too. Uh, a little bit of change, obviously, with the uh. Wait, Christmas falling on a Thursday.
That's wrong.
Christmas, Christmas Eve, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth would be closed on both of those days. But as far as number of paid days, it's the same. There were none added. You're good with that, I'll take a motion to to approve.
I move to approve the calendar.
I'll second.
All right, we have first, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any uh, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next, Phil Schneider, like I said, is uh, at another board meeting as we speak. Tom has a couple of things on his his area here.
Yeah, just to bring to your attention that uh, I have. You have a couple of appointments to make into the Huntingburg redevelopment commission. Currently are Nick Stevens and Jamie Rashi. I contacted them both and they're both willing to serve again for their ne- for their next term, next yearly term.
So it looks like we need to talk about, as a council, who we might recruit to serve on the um, Board of Zoning Appeals for that term.
Okay. Correct. They must be within the jurisdiction.
Of the two-mile radius or in city limits?
That's uh, that's what, within the jurisdiction. Let me ask Phil to make sure, but I'm pretty sure it's, because we have one member that sits up just outside the city. But there has to be a certain number that are in the city, so. Uh, we do have one outside. We can only have one outside.
Last one was Riley.
I don't think you could ever fill. We never did fill that.
That was this position.
Yeah.
Shame on him.
Do you know the names of the people that are on the Board of Zoning Appeals now?
Wow.
Uh, Dave Schiff is one.
Yes, I do.
That's a good question, but yes.
I do know him. I don't have him on this computer. I apologize, but I don't have him here.
Next thing. We don't have to, do we have a deadline on that?
No. No, just just before the first meeting of the uh, year, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
So by the second Monday of uh. Of.
Is there a, is there approval process or just?
If you have, if you approve them, then then we can get, go ahead and get the uh, the the first two are have bonding requirements. The second, the Board of Zone Appeals doesn't. So in order for them to have action, take action in January, they have to have taken their own, hand up their bond. So I just need your action for the Development Commission.
So, okay.
I think the guys that are listed on online are Todd Humbert, Ronald Mundie, Remo, Nino, and Dave Schiff. As members.
Yeah, Nick Nino's the ones that sits outside the city.
I'm perfectly.
So we really need somebody with them.
Yeah.
When do they typically meet? Just as needed?
I think that's as needed. Only when you have an appeal.
Yeah.
Do they have a set meeting time though during the week? If it's like, is it like always the third Wednesday only as needed or something?
Called as.
Okay.
It's like the plan, Paul, he's at on Monday normally. I don't know if it is or not.
Okay, we'll we'll start a conversation and see if there's some folks that we all would like to approach.
Yeah.
And they'd be on another board?
Yes. In fact, a couple of those that you mentioned are on other boards.
Okay. So I'm not volunteering or anything, but can a council member serve on that board? Is that a?
Sounds like a volunteer.
I don't know.
I'm pretty sure you can't because I'm on the uh.
But are you, you're just an advisory member, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm advisory, that's true.
I don't think that we can serve as an advisory member. Yeah.
No, I don't think so either. I don't, I'm pretty sure.
I can throw some names uh, to you guys and make make a decision and.
Okay.
Why don't you put an email together and we'll.
And we'll we'll throw together some suggestions.
Scatter it around.
Okay. We have people periodically volunteer to be on some, it's tough filling board positions. But I have had a couple of people roast that they would like to serve in some way. I had about five last year and we pointed three of those to a board. We have one here, uh, this evening, in fact, that's uh, on the Housing Authority. Had a couple others too, so. I'll get you some names.
Pretty well, okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. So we need a motion. Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve Nick Stevens and Jamie Rashi to the Huntingburg Redevelopment Commission.
I'll say that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
You only had to ask three times.
We're getting there.
Better than home. Uh, the second one is uh. It's just for your information, since history since we started the Trex program. And uh. It's come to an end for twenty-two-five again, so. Sixty-six hundred and eight dollars as well.
Recovered.
I think that's very exciting. That's neat. So is this, is there a fee on top of this? Or like, is there a portion that they take out, or is this actually what we received?
We receive what we, what's owed us. They pay an extra.
Fee.
Ten percent to the state and then the county gets fifteen dollars. There is an ex- there is extra tax.
But the sixties.
This is, this is an accounting of what the city has received.
Right.
Right.
But the individuals will have other fees to pay and.
I just didn't know if this was, like, if we had to write off part of it too, or if we received.
We've already written it off.
Yeah.
Some are write-offs and some of our, some of them are actually preventing us from writing off because we're.
Like that sooner.
And that's all I have then.
Give a little bit of help soon. And it's a pretty good average.
You got council items this evening.
I don't know if you wanted to explain what Trex is to our audience, Tom, if you. Someone might not know what it means. But in in real quick, you can.
What it is, is it's through the Indiana County's uh, Counties Association. They put together uh. A. A list that goes against the Indiana. It attaches to the Indiana's refunds. If they uh, if they fail, file their Indiana taxes and they owe us money and are on this program. We get paid first and then and then they receive what the balance.
But it has to do with us being able to collect old utility bills that otherwise would have been written off.
Tickets, uh, anything, past invoices that we have for any, really anything.
It's ma- it seems like a majority of it is utilities that people have left and it's just a way for the city to collect money, which our bad debts are pretty low as it is, but this is even a.
Could be bad check.
A little bit more.
Some are cause ready, some die.
Yeah.
I think a lot of our biggest ones last year were, yes, you know, they occurred and I collected fees, so. Uh, where there were nobody left behind to pay those fees. All right, anything else? All right. I know we have some people here want to talk today, uh, so we're going to give you an opportunity to come forward and and I think we had some citizen items. We had some requests for people to meet. What we're going to ask, you know, we're gonna, we're not gonna go on for the next two hours here, you know, just let you know. Be consider these guys' time too, uh, but give you an opportunity to come forward. What we ask you to do is come to the podium, state your name, where you live, and. You can say the county. You don't have to, don't give your address by any means, uh, but come up and and let us know what the subject is.
We are very interested in hearing what you have to say, though. So we're glad you're here.
Yes.
Hi, I am Holly Bartle Gogol. I live in Huntingburg. Huntingburg City Council members and Mayor Elkins, I'm standing in front of you today with my neighbors and with a sincere and uh, very heavy heart to ask that you consider placing a pause. Moratorium on the proposed Crossvine Battery Energy Storage System and Solar Project, allowing for time to better understand the impacts of this infrastructure. This message is not born out of hostility to renewable energy. It is a message born out of love for our homes, the land, the safety of our children, the schools. The honorable members of our emergency services, the people who have tended to and sacrificed for this land. And most importantly, to the future generations who will have to inherit inherit the consequences of your decisions today and with respect to this project. Based on the maps collected from various sources, including AES, the current project owner, it appears that approximately forty percent. Of the area designated for solar panels falls within the city of Huntingburg's two-mile fringe area, also known as the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the ETJ. Before I continue, I want to take ni- time to acknowledge my neighbors who are present behind me today. Additionally, I do not want to discount the more than two hundred signatures we have collected in opposition of this project. We have come to the table to understand how this project is a benefit for our community, our schools and our homes, not our houses, our homes. Each of us has a story of caring for this land and the community that will be adjacent to this project. The project will be the backdrop of the playground of Huntingburg Elementary School, a town staple for what we are known for when a visitor comes to visit the city of Huntingburg. Right now, it feels as though our rural landscape and the people who live here, the same people who have given back to the city and this county, their entire lives. As well as those who are trying to establish their future lives are a page being erased before we've had a chance to read it. There has been little and in most cases, zero communication on this project to the neighbors and local communities to be directly impacted. There has been no public communication, meetings or similar. Residents that have been contacted have received in most cases, a general letter, no plans, no maps, no details, no timeline. While I realize a public meeting was scheduled for this week, the public only to be notified via social media late last week. There's been no public involvement on something that will have serious, if not also dangerous, consequences. The proposed Crossvine Battery Storage System is approximately two miles from Huntingburg Elementary School, Southridge Middle School and Southridge High School to the east. And less than two miles from Holland Elementary School to the west. The battery storage system will be about a quarter mile, one thousand three hundred and sixty feet from the city of Huntingburg's ETJ. Adjacent to a large tributary will lie along a floodplain and is surrounded by homes and farms. Both both the battery storage system and solar panels will be in the airport of aircraft overlay district. As mentioned to a letter, in a letter provided to Mayor Elkins on October twenty-fourth, twenty-first, excuse me. There are some significant safety and environmental drawbacks of this battery energy storage system and solar panel project that warrant concern. Including the risk of fire, toxic exposure to first responders and facility personnel. And the potential for explosion if flammable gas accumulates and ignites, as stated in the State of Indiana Utility Scale Battery Energy Storage Study, Section five point three point two. While the causes of the battery system risk were also presented to Mayor Elkins on October twenty-first, we are interested to hear your thoughts on how this. Will impact the limited resources of our fire departments, both both volunteer and city. There have been fires at the solar farms in our neighboring counties. From our research and communication with those who have responded, the following must be done. The response to a solar panel fire. The solar farm operator of the system must be a must be present to initiate the shutdown sequence or deinteractize the system from the inverter. Noting DC power will remain in the conduits and panels themselves. If the inverter is damaged, disconnects must be found and shut off. Again, this must be done by a solar farm operator, someone who may not live in this community. Once power is confirmed to be off, crews can suppress the fire. But considering these burning solar panels are associated and supposed, associated components release toxic chemicals and risk the electroc- electrocution remains. Due to the persistent electrical hazard, firefighters often devi- often adopt a defense posture spraying from a distance. Oftentimes just letting the fire burn out. We are of the understanding that if there is an accident, if there is an incident where a vehicle were to drive through the security fence, which is in most cases, just a simple chain link fence. And into the solar panel field, it would be extremely difficult to safely respond to those individuals involved. A fire at a battery storage system is another issue. Firefighter response to a large scale eighty-five megawatt. And a battery energy storage system as the one being proposed here primarily involves a defensive operation focusing on containment and exposure protection rather than. Direct extinguishment of the burning batteries. The key challenges are the risk of explosion, toxic gas release. And the difficulty of extinguishing lithium ion thermal runaway events. If on fire, these fires cannot be extinguished, taking days or weeks to burn out. I do want to mention a thermal runaway event that occurred at a ten megawatt facility in Chandler, Arizona. Please remember, this is an eighty-five megawatt facility that's being proposed here. I'm telling you about a ten megawatt. This minor incident resulted in a freeway to be closed and businesses to be evacuated. The firefight, the fire department was delayed, sorry, deploy. Deployed to the facility for thirteen days, April eighteenth to May first, using two rob- robots to monitor the smoldering facility. In twenty nineteen, nine first responders were injured in a similar battery incident in Surprise, Arizona. On August ninth, twenty twenty-three, petition twenty dash twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-three dash oh one was introduced to the Huntingburg Board of Zoning Appeals. British Petroleum BP, who owned the project before purchase, being purchased by AES, submitted a petition as a special exception due to the floodplain hazard. Also noting the proximity to the Hainburg Airport and being within the aircraft overlay zone. The Huntingburg Board of Zoning Appeals unanimously denied their request for this special exception. In summary, the Board of Zoning Appeals found that this project will be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the community. But if allowed, the use and enjoyment of other property will in the immediate vicinity will be affected negatively. And that this project will impede or substantially alter the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses allowed in the zoning district. While I understand the importance of renewable energy and supporting responsible innovation, I'm concerned that this project is moving forward. Without clear alignment with the city's long-term land use goals. A significant portion of the proposed Crossvine Solar Panel System lies within the Huntingburg Zoning Authority. In conflict with the city of Huntingburg, city of Huntingburg's comprehensive plan, your home, your Huntingburg, this project will go directly against Goals One and Goal Two. Eliminating in areas of potential growth within Huntingburg's two-mile jurisdictional boundary incompatible with the long-term vision of this community. If you want the next generation to remain in this city and build their life, living and working in this community, do you think that these projects are the means of encouraging our young people to build their futures here? This project represents a serious misuse of valuable land and emergency services. This sets a precedent for the use. Of battery storage systems and commercial solar projects in and near the city of Huntingburg's ETJ. The city of Huntingburg is responsible for upsizing structures and maintaining the increased watershed, as there will be an increase to the acres of improbable area, increasing the time of concentration. This area drains into the same watershed as the city of Huntingburg. Has the impact of this belt development been mitigated to prevent worse flooding conditions within the city limits? Please note, this new technology within limited awareness and reporting. This new technology with limited awareness and reporting, supporting long-term impacts of large-scale solar and battery energy energy storage system. Many residents and local officials have not been fully informed about how these facilities function, how they are maintained, or what the end of light implications may be. Much of the available data comes from the developers themselves, with a few independent or transparent reporting requirements. Currently, there is no consistent framework for monitoring monitoring system performance, fire or safety incidents. Or the condition of panels and batteries over time. The lack of oversight creates uncertainty about true environmental and economic costs of these projects. Especially once and if they're, they reach the end of their twenty to thirty-year lifespans. We would like to take this infrastructure seriously and want to take this opportunity to make this information public, stating that it's. That a significant increase in setbacks from schools, homes, utilities, streams, airports and roadways have been some of the best proactive planning. Other cities and counties have executed to be effective against this devastating incident, going above the limited default setbacks. We are pleading for your assistance to intervene, pause the project to assess the extent of this project, the risk and any potential long-term burden this project. Of this project in its entirety. As elected city officials, each of you are setting the precedent for the current and future generation of all portions of the city of Huntingburg. Thank you for your time, your service and your willingness to listen. I hope you will protect the land, the people, the children and the legacy of those who fought to protect this land we love so much. To keep our city of Huntingburg truly a city like no other. And let us safely and honorably end our days at our beautiful homes. We plead to the council to adopt a moratorium to take this precautionary step to protect our community's interest and ensure. That the currently proposed and future renewable energy development occurs and occurs responsibly and transparently. In closing, we have a few questions in hopes we can better understand the current status of the Crossvine project. Seventy-two of the ninety-two counties have a moratorium on solar panels, panel projects. Have you considered putting a pause on this project due to any of. The reasons such as public opposition, uh, to create a new or create a new or amend existing ordinances, the lack of siting plan with the city of Huntingburg, the risk. We we have found that many counties and communities, even if they have solar panels, have gone back and said, uh-oh, we didn't do enough. And they put in more, so, yeah, but I've got a few questions and that's the first.
I I laugh because you look like you're running out of breath. It's, thank you.
You're not, you're not on the time.
I'm passionate about this issue. I think it's very serious.
I I know, but you need, yeah, you can, you, if you need, take your breath, you can go through there, but uh. Take your, take your time and and go through it, because I I will preface this by saying that I'm not, I'm not a proponent of. Solar panels, never have been. I'm an opponent to them. If there's anything legally that we can't do. You know, and we've been in talks with our attorney. I've, you know, met with Mr. Browder. I've told them what my feelings are. I I see no benefit to to solar fields and what they do. So there is no benefit to the city of Huntingburg. You know, but you know, we also have statutes that we have to follow, whatever those are, and I, you know, we've. Our attorney isn't here this evening, and I apologize for that, but he is involved. I will say, as we speak right now. Uh, we have requested AES is right now meeting with our emergency management agency for the county. Uh, we are heavily involved with our our police, our police and fire department. When they asked to meet us to sell the project. I kind of turned them loose, our our police chief and our fire chief on them. Uh, you know, what what are, what do we do when when something happens? And we know, I mean, you you pretty much laid it out there. Uh, but yeah, it is serious. I don't, I'm not a proponent. I'm not going to be out here fighting for AES. Uh, when BP first approached us, I'll be honest, I knew that uh, BP would never be the owner of the field. I knew that they were going to, they were kind of skirting the I U R C by, they they have a process, BP can actually operate that field as an owner. And get the permit about two years faster than a utility can. And we knew that was the case, but. And as soon as that closed, and I even asked BP, in this public meeting here, who are you going to sell this to in the end? And they. Did not disclose that they were selling to anybody. You guys were there, but uh.
Yeah, we know.
I I would like to.
Continue your questions.
You to answer my question. So has the city considered putting a pause on the project due to any of the reasons we discussed today?
I don't know what we can do legally to do that.
Yeah, so um, through through research, and I'm not a lawyer, I'm not going to pretend to be one, but the city does have a solar ordinance. So the Huntingburg Huntingburg Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Four, Section L, Solar Energy System Standards, ZERI commercials. So um, the city can strengthen those existing ordinances, right? Um, increasing setbacks, noise restrictions, have a process for citing large commercial solar generating facilities.
Yeah, it is actually. The way that this was was explained to me from from our attorneys right now is that. When the U D O was adopted five years ago, it's different than it was in two thousand fifteen with the solar field in the end. At that time, that was considered a power generating safe station. It's considered in within um, zoning ordinance down land use. When it's agriculture, that's an acceptable agricultural activity, solar fields. I don't understand it. You don't understand that. You don't, and you know, and I'm not trying to make light of what you do, because this is, what's that?
Can that be changed?
Uh, don't think so.
Why not? Can you tell me more about that?
No, I can't, because I get, we will get answers with our attorney and and answer those for you.
Can I, can I approach?
Sure. We'd like to have your letter to, whatever you read if we could.
Page out of that, um, out of the zoning ordinance. So you'll see on here, agricultural use. You guys do have solar energy systems. Now, under special exception uses, confined feeding operations, wind energy systems and things like. Um, you know, a farmer's market, those are special exceptions, but a solar panel, a commercial solar panel field is not, is not a special exception.
Good information.
So do you think the.
Right.
Do you feel as a, as a mayor and as a council that maybe these need to be reviewed?
I absolutely think we do. If it's something we can learn about or figure out how to put a pause to it, I'd be interested in that, you know. I speak for myself. I don't know about the the other group. You know, I speak for myself, I don't know about the, the other group.
When I think when this was originally introduced to us, it was basically that there was such a small portion that was going to be, I mean, we didn't have any drawings, we didn't have anything. They just were saying this was happening. And whenever we asked questions about it, they basically said it was a formality and that we were just kind of, we were on the very small outskirts of it, that it was more of a county.
I don't know that we took any action on it. I don't think we're asked to take any action.
Yeah, but then we set up a bond for the
For the decommissioning.
For the commissioning.
What do we do?
So, we do.
They've got to, they have to keep a bond in place, and if it does sell, that bond has to be transferred. That's the only thing we really approve.
If, if they sell it, if they stop producing over, within six months, they have to decommission
And remove it.
That and remove it, and that's what the bond was for. That's what you approved.
That's the only thing, that's the only action we took, because we didn't have a, we didn't have the, it's not in our jurisdiction or authority. They didn't have to ask us, I don't think. Well, they came here courtesy, that's the only thing they didn't have.
So, yeah, some forty percent of it, it appears to be forty percent. You can't find a lot of information on this stuff.
No.
Does fall in the Huntingburg's U D O zoning.
When I looked at it, we came up with eighteen of the acres fell within our jurisdiction. So, that was it.
Grab my right sheet.
When I pulled up our zoning maps.
Solar panels won't fall within, that's approximately two hundred acres. That was provided about four weeks ago.
Yeah, I need to get the overlay to see where we're at with the overlay from the zoning. Yeah, I've got the zoning map, but their, their overlay is, they're over in here, right?
Sorry, yeah, so, let's see here.
Actually, they're over in here. On the south side.
So, it is in this area. So, that's within the the city's jurisdiction as well as the aircraft overlay district.
This one right here, the, just so you know, this, for references would be what I would call the Schmidt, Mike Schmidt's farmhouse right here. And it'd be the area around it, so that little triangle is there. And the rest of this would be in her overlay, which I think is only about eighteen acres.
It's about two hundred to two hundred and fifty. Yeah. So, here's, here's the plan, so. All of those solar panels will be in, in Huntingburg's jurisdictional area.
Because there's four hundred, well, what's Yeah, that's north here, but seven fifty south. This is seven fifty south right here.
That's where the, that's where it goes between.
This portion.
So, this is, this is seven fifty here. This area is not covered under it, but that, just that one property, because it's residential. So, within it, but that would be seven fifty here.
That's seven fifty one by wayside.
Fifty runs east and west.
Yes.
That's the hall, basically hall and tree.
The only one on there is the Hannibut property.
Are they going on their property, please?
No, I think they're going around it. Are they not? They're going around the Hannibut property. I don't know if it's still Hannibut, that's what I know what it is asked.
Anything on the north side of seven fifty has not been signed up.
Okay, that would be that side, then, yeah.
Yeah.
What's that? That just sold again?
And this is, this is four hundred here.
Because I don't know who owns it. I'm not sure they, they even still own it.
Further, further west outside of your jurisdiction, it does travel to the north side of seven fifty as well. I can, I have a map of the project.
But this is what plane that
Well, number one.
Everything in white is solar panels. Proposed solar panels, the blue is the AES sub, sorry, the center point substation.
It's seven fifty.
Yeah.
Everything in white is, all these
Everything we're
Yes, more land than that is signed up, but those are the areas that have solar panels as, as we have seen reflected in planes.
Right.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, uh, yeah, so, the white is, uh, our AES plan sets that have been moved on to the board, so we can see a full picture of it. There is more property than what is highlighted in white that is signed up for this project.
That their maps aren't up to date.
We haven't.
Yeah, well, they're not sharing them with you anyway. Okay.
Well, I think clearly from all of this, we haven't been presented with any of this.
So, nope, it's all news to me.
So, I feel like that, that in and of itself, if we have
There are five property owners signed up for this right now.
It would take an order change if you were, I understand if you do do a moratorium on permits that would, that those moratoriums could impact other projects too, including housing and other things.
Could you minimize it to be for solar, newer existing solar development?
Uh, I've been told no, so.
Yeah, we'd love to hear more about that.
Okay, I agree. If there's a way we can stop, we could. Now, we'll know that they can move it eight hundred feet to the west and we're done. You know, they're done with us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you're right. And I have talked to two county elected officials today, see if they'd be willing to look further, so. I, I'm on your side, okay? I am. I'm not making excuses here, I'm just, I have
I'm not, I'm not asking you for you to be on my side or not be on my side. I mean, we want to have the conversation of how we can best support the city of Huntingburg, so.
Yeah, it's, I want to, I wasn't, I wasn't a fan of the ones that were built on the north side. I wasn't elected official then, I was against those, so I was, and Yeah, and I've had two other solar people contact me and want to meet, and I say, no. You know, I, I, I won't even meet with them. Yeah.
And I don't think the people signing up are aware of what's happening to their land either. I've spoken with a couple of lawyers on this issue, and they say, well, it's going to be okay, you can work through it because these companies own this land. And then I tell them that it's leased and they're speechless with me.
Leased, yeah. Yeah. They, they could be solar panel dust, and then they build the batteries.
Yeah, if you want to speak, we'd rather you come up here, because that's, that's, people that are watching online can't hear you. If you want to come, that's, you know, if you have to be at the microphone. We'd like for you to speak, but, you know, yeah, we'd like for you to come up here and speak.
How many questions did you have?
Yeah.
And I want, and I want to go back to that. I want to go on record that I am opposed to solar panels in this area. I'm telling you, I don't like it. I don't like it on the other end of the county. The county needs to just get on board here and do something, and we can only do so much. Now, I do think that we should approach our, the attorney and find out what we can do, what is possible for Huntingburg to do. I don't know that without him sitting here. I don't, I don't, but I do think that question should be asked, and I'd like an answer to that question. What, what is our, do we have a dog in this fight? What are the possible solutions that Huntingburg could do to throw up a roadblock? And what are the implications for doing that? Now, there's two sides to that. If we, we set up a roadblock for this company, what does it trip us up on something else that we want to do? That everybody else in the room wants to do possibly, so.
Yeah, the answers I given in that, in the email, I had Phil, our attorney, review every one, one of those. And he came back and he said, you're exactly right, so, you know, I says, is there anything else we can do? And he said, well, not really, but we'll, we'll check in on it, definitely. I like, I, I'm you know, I, you know, you say I'm not, I, I am taking sides, okay? You know, I'm on the side of the people that are against these panels. And I have not ever been a solar panel fan. White County, Indiana, if you go there, there's solar panels and windmills everywhere. They produce five times amount of electricity that that county will ever use, and not one kilowatt goes into that county. Not one goes that, not one of these will go into this county. So.
I think it is important to, to share what is going on in our neighboring counties as well. Within the last week, you know, Governor Braun and Petersburg, they're going to have the first nuclear SMRs, they're, they're researching that energy. This won't be a drop in the bucket, right, for what the state of Indiana, what our country needs when it comes to energy production, what, what requirements are being asked for, from companies to, to our power grid. This isn't going to be a drop in the bucket. Nuclear SMRs, again, happening, happening next door, as, as Governor Braun announced last Thursday, and then again today. That's a huge, huge contribution to the grid. We, we really
Do you like those?
I don't know enough about them, to be honest with you. I, I need to do a lot of research there. But I will say the footprint is tiny versus taking out acres and acres of our prime real estate here in DuBois County.
I do think it is the way of the future. I do think so, and I travel a lot in my job, and I see these out in the West Coast. And all these data centers in there, that's the next step. You don't have, you build a data center, you got to have the power, so.
But yeah, if a solar panel isn't the answer to that, then why are we taking up all these acres of farm ground in, in Huntingburg's jurisdictional area, you know, going against the strategic plan that was
I agree.
Can you say for the group, why would a, why would a property owner lease their property to have solar panels covered? Covering it? What's, what's the incentive?
They're getting a, a great, great check.
They get more than they can do for farm, they can, they get more money an acre than they can by farming it.
I'm understanding it's twice as much what a corn or beans would bring in, so that's why you do it. I see them all the time. I, I, it's depressing to see them. I, I see the growth when I fly over and see them, they're just growing everywhere. And it's, uh, it's heartbreaking. I mean, it's sad to see. I, and I, and I agree with you also on your group. If we can do anything, I would help out to do it with too.
I'm Corinne Mydod, and I'm from Huntingburg as well. And we're just talking about the ones in Pike County. And AES also has that project as well. And I can tell you firsthand, because my brother-in-law lives right by them, the detrimental effects that it has already had to, to their area. And I can even tell you, you asked the question about the land, you know, what would make a landowner give, you know, why would they give consent to put these hideous solar panels on their land? And it is, it's money, it's all about money. But I will tell you that one of the landowners that sold out to AES now is like, and this is in Pike County. But they are like, why did we do this? They're like, this is awful, because, get this, her son, who used to hunt on their land, can now not hunt on their land. And so, he is upset because he cannot hunt on his land. And because they put solar panels and hideous, ugly fences, like, it looks like barbed wire fences, like a prison, all the way around it. It is, it is, you know, awful. And so, it's just, you know, aesthetically speaking, it's, it's not pretty. But, you know, more importantly, I'm a biology teacher by trade. And the more I was researching the panels and what happens after hail damage, and what happens after, you know, just other damage, you know, the cadmium that leaks from them, the lead that leaks from them, that, it's called, let me tell you, oxide. It was like a sulfur oxide and a silicon dust that leaks from these panels when, when they are damaged. And I'm all about renewable energy. I'm a science teacher, yeah, let's do it. But, you know, in cases like that, it's, it's tough. You know, you can't, you can't risk your kids, you know, you're at Huntingburg Elementary, and all of a sudden you've got these damaged solar panels that are leaking all of these toxic things. And, and that's awful, you know, you don't want that in your environment, you don't want that around us. And, and so, in that regards, I, you know, obviously, like you guys, feel, feel the same way, but I, you know, I'm with Holly and everybody else who's here. You know, just whatever we can do to, you know, get that moratorium in place, or, you know, stricter, you know, zoning restrictions, just whatever we can do to put a pause to it, to put a stop to it. I know Spencer County did it. I'm not sure how they did it, but I do know that they put a moratorium in effect and
Are you going to approach the county? I say, I think that was about a week ago you were there?
Yeah.
Early in the morning?
Have you had any feedback from him?
I have a Yeah.
Well, they don't have zoning, so.
They don't have any, and that's what you're requesting.
Yeah.
I've been through the AES, I've been all through the AES in Pike County.
Yes.
And I know Glenn has probably been through it. I don't know if the rest of the board members have, but it is not pretty.
Oh, no.
It's large.
Yeah, it's very large, it's huge. And it, you know, I actually, I was telling my mom on the way here that, you know, in, I used to teach all about renewable energy. And I would divide the kids up, and I would have each group, you know, you do hydroelectricity, you do solar, you do geothermal, you do wind. You know, and we would then rate them. We would rate, you know, these renewable energies. And every single time I would have the kids vote on them, what would you have first, what would you have second? Every time, solar panels came in last. I'm like, why? Because they're elderly? They're seventh and eighth graders, you know, but I mean, it's, it's true, though, but I, it's just, yeah. It would be, it would be devastating.
I think there's some benefit to consumers' solar, you know, if you want to put it in your backyard or
Absolutely, I totally agree with that.
Big difference between consumer solar where it's not
Yes.
That's a micro, that's a micro generation.
Yes, I totally agree with you.
We're guilty of that.
I don't have a problem with that for micro generation, what we will do.
Another big question I wanted to get in front of you guys today, it was to what Corinne is talking about is the safety. We're putting our emergency services at a big risk, something were to happen. And I know that AES has said in the past, well, we haven't had any incidents. I've spoken with, I've done a lot of research and spoken with the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. And you cannot get data, you cannot get data on what, how many have had fires, how many have had explosions. You can't find that information. They will not release it to it, and release it to you to it. But I, I just have some, please think of our first responders, our emergency services, there's your, of our firefighters as you guys are making these decisions. They're the ones that are going to be out there, and obviously those that live right, right next to it.
I can tell you, my fire chief doesn't care about those statistics. He says, I'm worried about the worst-case scenario. Not how many times it happens, but what could
I'll text once.
Yep.
Yeah.
If it's one out of a thousand and that happens to be it, it's, that's, that's, you know, that's a problem, so.
Yeah.
It's, it is, that, you know, to this point, we want the worst-case scenario to, to, to look at it and, and protect that. We will, we will, we will get together with our attorney, find out if there's anything we can do. Even if we have to find, I'll, I'll get ahold of some people in Spencer County, find out what happened down there. But what, what we can do.
Yeah.
Because I think we have consensus from the board, probably, to be able to at least look at that.
And to look at.
Okay, it feels like there needs to be a project like this that raises the risk and the resources, resource requirement that the local fire departments have, ought to pay those fire departments. Or, I mean, at the minimum, if the project goes through, they ought to be paying the local communities that are going to fight these fires. And can you say whether or not, in your research, Holly, the, the projects that you cited that have had fires and explosions in Arizona, are there, are those the exact same technology or construction type as what they're putting here? Do you know?
Can't find those details. I haven't been able to. I will say that the, the one I recent sourced the most was an AES facility. But no, I don't have details on the different facilities. I did ask again for the Department of Homeland Security to give me the permit on this project, and they would not, so.
It, it's very, I don't know, do you want to use the word secretive?
Yeah, and I, and I understand to an extent, because it is, it is energy, right? They've got a big fence down around AP for a reason, right? They, it is our, we want our, our lights to turn on, so I appreciate all of that. But at the same time, this is a huge risk for, for us.
Our lights will turn on if there's no field. That's been my point.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll have We'll, we'll have power without that field, we don't need that field for our power.
Yes. Yeah.
I'm, I, I spoke against the one up north when I was a citizen and not an elected official and uh, this first chance, you know. Of course, this is kinda before I was elected, all this thing, other decommissioning agreement that we signed several months ago.
You guys may have a timeline, but we don't know of one, um, so we, we would love if you guys would. And could um, present a moratorium, approve a moratorium as soon as possible.
Have they broke ground or anything on any of these?
No, they have not. The construction that you see out there today is for um, a center point uh, substation. Um, it is on uh, Ciggy Co Land. This is a AES project on unleashed ground.
And while we're here, um.
And I, I don't wanna steal the mic, I'm sure other folks in the crowd have something to say as well, but.
Stacey said you've been over to the Pike County one?
I have.
It's twelve hundred acres, what they're gonna do out here is sixteen hundred acres.
They have two in Pike County.
Yeah, well, the one's twelve hundred, that's only one.
While we're still on a public meeting, I do wanna say, while I'm thinking about it. Uh, Crossvine Solar Project Open House is this Thursday from five thirty to seven thirty at the Hunningberg Event Center. I encourage any cons, any, anybody that's uh, interested in this project to, to attend. Yeah, Thursday, November thirteenth, uh, five thirty to seven thirty Eastern Time at the Hunningberg Event Center. They conducted a virtual, they'll be conducting also a virtual open house, five to six thirty on the nineteenth. And uh, we'll get that, I think that's been out on Facebook and a few other things. I, I found out about this last Thursday, okay, about this meeting. And actually, I asked them for invitation, didn't get it. I got this from somebody else in the county uh, today, no, yeah, Friday, I'm sorry, evening, so. So, um, didn't get it from them.
I think that's because of the response of the county, uh, that they sent those because we told them there was no.
Really, yeah, they responded right after that meeting.
We, we have, yeah, and we've, we have asked to meet, attorney and myself, we just haven't come up with a time that works for, for everybody. But we were trying to get together next week with them, so that's, yeah.
Would you be willing to make that a public meeting?
I, I think from a legal standpoint, we, we can on the first minute, but we will, we will definitely give you an update on everything that's happening. And we will report on that meeting at a public meeting. But I think we'll get more out of them outside the public meeting, frankly. Anyway, it's, we, I am gonna give them, if, if you provide us with what you provided us to us today. We will address all those issues with them, cuz I, you, it was well said, well written, but I'd love to have a copy. We can probably, we can put it in, and we'll put it in our minutes as a public to. We can put as attachment, can we not?
Yeah.
It'll be there for perpetuity, it'll be here forever, so I'd love to have that. Ever ending?
Yeah, I don't wanna take up all your time.
Oh, no, it's alright.
If you read through this stuff, you get a pretty good idea who AES is and uh, who the.
I'll follow copy and send it to everyone else here.
And then the other thing is, uh, this is what's going on in California, we are for a long time. And if you look on websites, they, they, they are putting in more rules all the time because they have a lot of fires. And uh, anyway, there's some information out of like where you read through.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah, well, um, we can make the voice companies that do. I know there's a lot of questions for people like what our fire department has done to prepare for this. I think that's one question we've asked our fire chief. And I was gonna ask Mr. Thacker, what do you know about Holland has prepared for the emergency services?
But I thi, I think that's where it is where we haven't really heard anything. It's just the little teeny tiny bit that they give, gave us. And we had questions then at that meeting and it was basically that it was kind of a done deal and it was just there. So, at that point, we were trying to make sure that if something would happen, that the land was restored to what it was originally. So, we were making sure that that bond was in place. But other than that, I think that's where they said we, where we were on it, so.
Meeting who? Okay.
They were trying to get together with her today, were they not?
Make a copy of that.
Today's meeting, okay. Prior, it was, it was going on same time we were here, so I couldn't be there.
And this is alarming to us because we were the ones that notified Holland of this project, no one else had notified Holland of this project. And I think that's the scary thing, they're going ahead and building it, but nobody knows it. Everybody says, I haven't heard this, I haven't done this, but yet they are already building. And if we continue to wait until we know something, it's already gonna be. Something that needs to be talked about now and figured out now until it's too late. Cause then it's here, and then even if you do, that you're still, where are you gonna take this?
I know, I know you guys have thought of this, um, and Commissioner Blessinger mentioned it in, at the last meeting or in the article that was written about it. But the people who own the property don't like other people telling them what they can do with their property. And there could very easily be another meeting next week from the property owners that want us to butt out. And not be trying to control how they, what they plant or what they use their property for. And it's a, it's a real.
Well, I'm mayor, right now, the city tells me what I can do with my property. I mean, we, we all do, yeah. I can't put horses in my backyard, there's a lot of things I can't do that, that, you know. We have an ordinance against chickens, I would, I wouldn't have a problem with chickens in my yard and, and I know a couple of us wouldn't.
But our chickens causing a concern to the health and safety of the school and the children.
No, but, you know, I, I think it goes back to property rights is really the point that we're making. That a lot of times, we talk about property rights as a thing, but there are. Um, our property rights are restricted for certain reasons when it comes to, to public safety, so. And that's, that's, and also quality of life, quality of life and safety, those two things. We're told all the time what we can and can't do with our property, you know, and, and uh, so.
Also the case of, yes, so this is going in and that's very true, these property owners, we shouldn't be telling them what to do, but what about everybody's property that's next to it? The property value is, they can't sell their houses, it's gone.
I, I asked the county official today that question, what if it was next to your property?
Said he doesn't want it.
So. I won't tell you, I was talking to him, but I had to ask one today, so. So, what we'll do, uh, we'll do as you ask, if there's anything we can do from the zoning area, there's, there are options to stop it. I can't say we're gonna stop it if there is options, but we'll present those options to the council uh, for consideration. And whatever, and let them vote in a public meeting on whatever that is.
Whatever you can do to help us to get this, you know, the moratorium or the zoning measure comes would greatly be appreciated. I mean, beyond, beyond great, you know, there's like, yeah, anything.
We, I, I will do what I can to support you, you know, whatever we can do within legal aspects of it, I'm, I'm not. AES doesn't own anybody at this table. They, they provide, they will, they will be providing zero benefit to the city of Hunningberg. And uh, we'll look at it, you know, and, and the council will review those and make a decision based upon what we have. I can't speak for them and where they're gonna vote. I don't have a vote. So, I, I have a mouth, but I don't have a vote, okay? So, I, I can express and, um, you know, I expressed, Randy, and you know, when we met the first time, that I was not. You know, I said, before you go too far, I want you to know, I'm not a fan of, of these type of solar projects. So, don't try to convince me. Let's spend some time really talking about the real issues and we know. Uh, you know, when I met with AES the first time and it was just a casual get to know us type of a thing. You know, I, I said, I, that's when I brought in our fire chief and police chief and I said, you need to talk to these people. And tell, give us direction on what we do when that thing catches fire. Or you have an accident during construction, you know, and those type of things. Other, that's the only thing I wanna, I talk to them about, that was it. Yeah, if you wanna say, come up here, cuz.
They mentioned the battery system that they're using, or was it just a solar panel? Cause I think that's what the county council had trouble with, they didn't know about the batteries, so they kinda put it on hold for a few.
Yeah.
Hey, I can just say, my memory's not the best and this meeting happened several years ago. But I don't recall batteries being talked about either.
That's why they wanted to put a hold on it for two weeks because it's a big issue.
Yeah. The only issues we talked about was the kabur's about the noise, the kabur of the invertor, or what do you wanna call them? The bond, yeah.
The only people, yeah. The only people that were here from AES, when I was here, were a bunch of accountants that were trying to do the decommissioning plan. They were not engineers, they were not qualified.
Stuff is joke because once the company goes under, they puts it in, they're gone, the bonds are gone. That's what they were pushing with that, they said that's kind of.
Yeah, well, we, it is a third party, so, you know, if they go away, the third parties would still exist, so. And that has to be.
The bond is third, the bond is held, I think, even though the, the company goes out, I think that's held by a different company. And I think that, I think I asked that question, I think you asked that question.
Yeah. It's mostly reviewed every year to see if that's enough money.
Reviewed to see if it's enough money.
Five years, I think they had.
The one, the one thing that I would, did wanna say that the current project, um, I have a friend that lives in that area that isn't a. He's not, he's not gaining anything from that pro, he's not a member of, he's not getting leased. Um, but he was approached about um, offering, they were going to offer him a annual payment. Um, sort of a annoyance payment. And I assume that came with signing something that said that they wouldn't, they won't complain or he won't do anything. And they were gonna give him so much money a year and just send him this check every year for the next thirty years to sort of stay out of it and stay quiet. Which I thought was odd. Um, but I didn't see the paperwork, but I mean, I've known the guy for many years, I don't know why he would lie to me, you know? He can't even see it from where he lives. I mean, he sees it when he drives in and sees it when he drives out, but if he walks out into his front yard and walks all the way around his house and look, he cannot see it. You know, but he's close enough where he fell, he, he fell, he fell into their jurisdiction, I guess.
I just hope we can get something to do with it, cuz I think there's possibilities more is gonna show up at that home, so.
There's no doubt, there'll be more, there'll be other people.
Plenty of places, plenty of places to put this. I'm still, I don't know why they don't put it down in the middle of the interstate so they don't have to mow it.
What to do in foreign countries?
They do that in foreign countries. I know they do, why don't they use it for roofs on parking lots so you can keep some shade on your car, you don't, you know? There's lots of, now, I'm, I, I've been out west and there's lots of positives. I, I've been out west in, in the Vegas area and when you leave Vegas and go toward Arizona, there's giant sections of the desert like this. And, but there's nothing around for miles. I mean, it's within, you know, it's on the way to Hoover Dam, I mean, you, you have to pass it. But it's, it goes for miles and miles and miles, but there isn't a solitary, single person. I mean, it's desert, there's nothing there, nothing grows there.
Brown, they get money.
Sure, somebody's getting money for it, but I mean, it's, it's, it's the ideal location to put it. I mean, it's sunny all the time and it's in the middle of nowhere and you, nothing grows there anyway, you know?
We will.
Thank you for bringing to our attention.
Uh, Holly, I ask, you know, I do have Randy and I think Brett's information, but if I can get your contact information or whoever wants it, you can pass it on to everybody. But anytime that we get together, we'll let you know and it's uh, we can't, for sake of time, having public meetings. With this type of thing doesn't always work, cuz we have to advertise those well ahead of time. We have to, you know, ever put them in the paper and we, everybody has to show up there and then we can't. We, we will have, we have discussions all the time, but it's, uh, we always come back and tell people what we discuss and, and keep up with it. And bring it back in the meeting here and I communicate it to the, to them. But sometimes. With AES, I'm gonna stop there. There, it, they're a little bit different how you have to deal with some of these companies. And, and frankly, the people we saw were uh, marketing people more, probably more than they were anything.
Oh, yeah.
AES, there was nobody that really made decisions that we talked to. They were front people, marketing people, uh, what I would say accountants uh, type. You know, that they weren't engineers that could even qualify and give us good answers for anything. Saw this happen before I was mayor too, everything kinda rolled in after that. Uh, but uh, and before I was mayor, excuse me, but I know there are other, there were other groups that wanted to meet and I told them to stay away. We don't want you here and uh. They haven't called me back, so. Thank you very much, uh, thank you. Yeah, just, if you can get the copy of everything to me and then we'll do your contact, we'll, we'll, we'll get answers. Thank you very much. Well, if there are no more questions, I entertain a motion to.
Can it? No? Okay.
No citizens, no other citizens items?
I'm sorry, other citizens items, I apologize.
Motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
You are adjourned.